And you welcome all to the Village of Rybrook Planning Board Meeting. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to applicants, clients, professionals, and members of the public. My name is Rob Goodman. I'm Chair of the Planning Board. Board members also in attendance tonight is John Grzan, Donald Crumb, Scott Mendelson, Matthew Retner, Amy Schoen, and Jeffrey Richmond is joining us. Jeff has been on the ZBA, on the Zoning Board of Appeals for two years from 2012 to 2015. And he was actually a colleague of ours on the Planning Board from 2015 to 2017. And he is, he's entering as Dan Tartaglia, a longtime member of the Board for the last 12 years, has taken leave to expand his practice. And so Jeff, you know, thanks for coming in and filling Dan's yug shoes. Look forward to working with you. And it's also nice seeing all the board members together after the holiday. I also want to acknowledge David Heiser, who's our liaison from the Board of Trustees, our village attorney Drew Gammels, our superintendent of Public Works, Michael Noack, and our village planning consultant from Hardesty and Hanover, Sarah Brown. As always, we thank Tara Orlando in spirit for assembling all the minutes that we have to review and for all the back office things that she does to keep us going here. I think the minutes, actually, there are a couple of minutes that have been, that are ready for review. Let's see, we have minutes from July 2022 and minutes from February 10, 2022. I think there we have a quorum for both, maybe. Has anyone who has attended those meetings have anything to add to those minutes? Let's take the February 10, 2022 minutes. If not, can I have a motion in a second to adopt the minutes?
Second, second.
Mr. Grzan.
Yes.
Mr. Crumb.
Pass.
Mr. Mendelson.
Yes.
Mr. Retner.
Yes.
Mr. Richmond.
I'll abstain.
Michelle.
Yes.
Chairman Goodman.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. And then we have the July 28, 2022 minutes. And I think, one, two, three, we have a, we have a quorum for that. So does anyone have any, any additions, amendments to the July 2022 minutes? If not, can I have a motion in a second to adopt those minutes?
Vote.
Second.
Mr. Grzan.
Yes, again.
Mr. Crumb.
Yes.
Mr. Mendelson.
I believe I have to abstain.
Yeah.
Mr. Retner.
Yep.
Yes.
Mr. Richmond.
I'll abstain again.
Michelle.
I'll vote yes.
Thank you. Chairman Goodman, please vote. Thank you.
Okay. Really?
Yeah.
Are we like up to date?
We're up to date. The next one.
Wow, that's pretty terrific. What a board.
Right. Well, congratulations to Tara and the staff. That was a huge endeavor.
Wow. Novellas, they were novellas these minutes. They really were.
Yeah, for members of the public, just to appreciate this, when we were doing Zoom meetings under the governor's requirements, those meetings had to actually be transcribed word for word. So you can imagine.
Every A, every B, every it.
How massive these minutes were and people from the village had to put them together and revise them and edit them, and it was a huge endeavor. So we have finally caught up and our hats off to our staff for being able to do that.
Is there a time limitation when we need to approve these minutes within?
No, so minutes are supposed to be released to the public within two weeks. There's no timeframe to approve them, but if there's a FOIL request and we have a draft ready, we have to release the draft.
Even though it may not be approved?
Even though they're not be, and there's nothing in the law that requires that minutes be approved.
Thank you.
Okay, our first matter is seven Bobby Lane. Is that on?
No one's here.
No one's here.
Guess it's all.
Okay.
Good.
Any additional information regarding that application? Is the applicant going to?
I had a conversation with their engineer.
Right.
He has moved on from the practice to another municipality, actually. And he said he will follow up on it. That was last week, Thursday. Still waiting.
But Michael, what's the problem? Is there stormwater management issue that we are waiting some? Because I remember this was, last time we addressed this was when, in October?
Yeah.
And I thought we had it.
It's close.
There are some technical items that AI engineers are asking for, which may alter the stormwater management.
I reread the Gem's memo today, and that memo was written when? Sometimes in October? And nobody from the applicant had responded to any of that?
That's how long we've been trying to obtain this information. The applicant has consulted with other engineers, but legally, other engineers cannot take over someone else's design.
I have the same question that I just asked Drew to the application. How long can we drag this on without having it go back to the square one?
Yeah, there's no legal requirement. I think our practices, we won't really go beyond six months. And then the board, if the board feels it's necessary, we can require them to renotice if it's been, you know, a substantial amount of time.
Because my concern is that, excuse me, Mr. Chairman. You know, if you go for six months and there is no more public hearing, public hearing, is it open or has been closed?
It's still open. It's been adjourned.
Yeah, we schedule it.
Also, if somebody has a comment, they can still come back and, okay, then I'm fine.
But we would require him to renotice at this point, since it has been since September.
I think, I think one of the issues, though, that you raised was that if a new engineer has to come on board, they have to resubmit, they have to resubmit the site plan anew.
Not only that, but it has to be a whole new design. It cannot be the same design.
Oh, is that so?
Yes, because.
Is it a variation of the design?
Yep. If one engineer designs it, that is proprietary and historical data under their license, so they cannot.
Why doesn't the old engineer just enter into a waiver agreement with the new engineer and just waive his rights to?
I'm not an attorney, so I don't know, and I'm not getting in the middle of homeowner and they're professional.
I know, but it's like, you know, they should either finish up the application or withdraw it and resubmit it. See if you, see if you can get them to next month's meeting. If they, if they're, if they're not going to do anything by next month, then I think we should have a discussion about, you know, maybe taking it off our agenda, until they resubmit it. Okay. Thirty-two Lincoln Avenue, new matter on. Hello, sir. How are you?
I'm good. How are you doing?
How were the holidays?
They were nice. How were yours?
Happy New Year, John.
You weren't okay.
Happy New Year.
Yeah, nice, John.
It's a new year.
Yeah, right. I want to watch the Michigan game.
You're not part of the FAA system, are you?
This could be a cable issue. Everything's a cable issue, particularly if it's optimal. Hello, Fred. Calling Fred.
Okay, so they got one screen going.
Well, can we start?
Yeah.
Can we turn the other screen so you can see it? You really can't see the other screen, right?
We can.
Us, we can.
Yeah, we, yeah, I can, I think it's, it's hard for our colleagues on the other side.
You can wait.
You think you can move it, John?
Oh, we could move.
Oh, okay.
We could move. We could go sit out there.
All right, that's good.
Okay.
We can see it. That's good enough.
See, that's, that's what the professionals do for us.
Good enough. All right.
That's fine.
Okay.
So this is thirty-two Lincoln Avenue, which is a fairly new house that's built. Sorry. No, I'm good. Okay, so this is the front of the house. It's on Lincoln Avenue, which you all know is on the scenic overlay district. You really can't park on the street. So it has a lot of landscaping. That's looking out at Lincoln Avenue. It has the fence and the hedge. It has the one-lane driveway coming in. Right now, that's kind of two parking spaces, or it could be a K-turn. So that's what they have right now. But it's very difficult when people come to their house and then other people come, you can't turn around. So if you park in it, you can't turn around, so you have to back down the driveway onto Lincoln Avenue, which, after living there a couple of years, has become a problem. So what they want to do, and this is from the road, what we want to do is fan out the driveway after you come in and then just fan it out and make that spot bigger so that you can park cars, pull it closer to the side yard, and then you can be able to turn around if somebody's parked there also. So you can get in and out of the garage and you can turn around.
So John, this is, if I'm not mistaken, not the fact that they have lack of parking. More of issue in access to the main road, in and out.
The biggest issue is backing out onto Lincoln Avenue.
It's a safety issue.
It's really a safety issue. And the way the driveway is, if you have cars parked, you have to back down the driveway. So they were trying to move the parked cars over a little further so that when you, somebody goes or you try to get out, you can turn around and not have to back down the driveway. And knowing that the two times I've been there to put the sign up and down, and I've had it back out the driveway during the day, it is a challenging driveway to get out of. So that's the photo.
Yeah, so what would that mean in terms of expanding the parking spot?
Did you hear the speeches?
Sure. I think this is what they wanted to do.
So what we're proposing to do, right, this is the line of the existing driveway. So what we're proposing to do is take this twenty-one-foot piece and push it out eleven feet, just like half of a car length, so we can push it in. And then we're just gonna angle this piece so that you have more room to swing around. So this way, the cars are parked further in, and then you can back out and go out. If somebody's here, they can back and then go out of the driveway.
That driveway is a two-car driveway, from the street to the house, is it?
It's really not two lane at the road. It fans out. You can't park two cars side by side in this piece of the driveway.
At the beginning.
It's not a double Y.
It was a single Y, and then it fans out.
Was that something as part of, because this is not new. I mean, this is not relatively new.
This house was, what, two years old?
Was this a part of the, of the approval? Did we ask for a narrow driveway?
Well, normally you do. Well, normally somebody does. Because normally, when you're doing a new house, if you look at most new houses in Rybrook, you usually have a one-lane driveway, and then it fans out.
Right.
Because you don't like the approach from the road to be too wide. You kind of want it to fan out. We want to make sure drivers in Rybrook are good, so they can back down their driveway, they can curve over to do it.
That's not the case with me. Mine is a two, two, two.
Yeah, but your house was built, you know, before.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
You were built, you were built when, I mean, most Rybrook houses that are older.
Yes.
With the two-car garage, have a two-lane driveway.
Exactly.
But if you look at most of the newer homes, they don't.
Okay.
Some do, but most don't. So this house, because it was a larger lot, you kind of had the area closer to it. It was designed with, kind of from the road approach, one lane, and then it fans out. And our problem really isn't at the road being narrow. It's really the space by the house to turn around. So, so I don't, I'm not sure that, like a two-lane wide driveway at the road isn't really going to help us. Like, we really need more space at the house, and you need to turn around.
Is the house, with regard on Lincoln Avenue, slightly on the curve?
It's, it's before Talcott, so it's right before, and you're after the park and the.
The Lincoln Avenue does curve around.
It does curve, so when you're backing out, the cars coming from the hutch, you don't see as well as the ones coming from us just around.
Exactly, the side.
And those are the ones that are going to hit you as you're backing out.
Right, and this is, this is on the right side, so coming from the hutch, yeah. Yeah, okay.
So I mean, the thought here was push closer to the house, so you're further from the road. We tried to keep it out of the buffer as far as we could, but it's just, it's difficult to do.
And, and any additional screening, shrubbery, anything?
I mean, I know, I know on the letter, it said, I have to look at if, if the increase of the driveway affected those trees, which I need to put on there. And we will, right now, the house is well landscaped from the road. We could put a little bit of landscaping along the parking spot if we want to just offer a little bit more.
Excuse me, isn't the issue, like, this is a designated scenic road? So that actually, there is a vegetated buffer requirement that actually cuts through the new parking place?
Right, it cuts through five feet of the parking space. But if you look at the pictures of the house, the vegetation really is by the road, closer with the fence and all the plantings. So, so we can always add more.
So where, so where's the scenic, just, just remind me, where's the scenic?
So it's not just five feet.
First thirty-five feet.
It's not just.
Oh, sorry, it's ten feet, right?
Yeah, right. It's ten, it's ten feet.
Yeah, you are encroaching ten feet into the scenic overlay.
Right, so, so.
That's not bad. That's not terrible.
Right, so we, I mean, we could add, like, right now, it's heavily, kind of with the fence and landscaping along the fence, they've got kind of some layers of it, and then there's some trees. So we have to verify that those trees or one of the trees might have to move over. So we will add the landscaping to the plan. That's what's there, and we can add. Oh, you can take over.
Good evening, Chairman. My name is Malik Samad. I was the builder. I did five houses in Rybrook. And Mr. Martino is willing to plant more landscaping to hide the parking. And then we have private hedge all along the fence that we can increase. So I'm, I'm positive that, let's say, once we move and they put, they put the cars in the side of the house, we don't see it as much obvious like now, because they're gonna be shaded by plants, by shrubberies that we're gonna plant along the new area of the driveway.
And Sarah, what is your opinion as far as screening is concerned? Whether it's feasible or not feasible?
I, I think it is feasible to add additional screening. I would like to see if those pin oaks have to be relocated, because that might dictate what we then screen with further, because they will eventually be shaded.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
When I looked at this application, when it was presented to us first time, I had a concern of the precedent setting. But I took a ride, and because if you look through the application that was presented the first time, there was no mention there at all about the safety issue and the degree of difficulty of getting out on the driveway on the major road. It was kind of presented as, you know, my family's coming over and I need additional parking space. And I did not have the positive reaction to that at the time. But now, looking at this and the fact where the house is located, and I agree with Mr. Scalado, that it's kind of very, very difficult to get out of that driveway onto the main road, especially coming from the Hudson Park where you do have a slight curve, so line of sight. We love to speak about that, don't we? It's not, it's not.
They are right behind you coming from the hatch, definitely.
So I, I, I think my reaction to it is, you know, as long as it's safety-related and it's not a permanent parking, it's more for a kind of turning vehicle around, so you can go, you know, front out. And with the proper screening, you know. But again, it's up to the, it's up to the zoning board, really, to grant you variance.
Yeah, I also drove, I drive past it every day, and I think Talcott actually is right there, right? It creates even more, yeah, so it almost T-bones.
It's a bad, it's a, it's a bad interest. It is. It's really like.
Well, and nobody drives the speed limit. He's the other person.
Well, that's also true. But even, even if they did, it's still, it's still a difficult place. And I, I was always under the impression that there was some safety involved. And frankly, I don't think the scenic overlay will be disturbed in any way. I think it will be enhanced by adding additional screening, and depending on the kind of planting that you use. So you're killing two birds with one stone, I think.
You know, I think, I think once it's done, it's landscaped, nobody's gonna notice it got bigger, because it's really close to the house, and it's kind of pushing. So the cars are a little further away, so you can turn.
I might be the minority, and I'm sensitive to the safety issues, for sure. But let me just point out, all the scenic highways in Rybrook are major roads. You're talking King Street, Ridge Street, Lincoln Avenue, Anderson Hill Road. They're all major roads. People speed on all those roads. We're not the, we're not the zoning board. But if I was on the zoning board, I would be thinking about the precedent, because that's the same argument to anybody. I mean, why not, why not just make the driveway double-wide from the start?
We're not trying to make it double-wide. Double-wide wouldn't help us turn.
But I mean, you've got the ability to turn. The driveway that you've got gives you the ability to turn. You're looking for more parking.
We're looking to move the parking over so you can turn when cars are parked.
You have the ability, if you parked, for instance, in the garage, you have the ability to turn.
No.
You're looking for more parking.
We're actually, we're, I mean, we're creating the exact two spaces we have. We're just pushing them eleven feet further back, so that when you pull out of the garage, if cars are parked, you can actually turn around, or if somebody else came, they could turn around, right?
No.
Or they can get out.
Right, I, I.
Like, like, I don't think making the driveway two-lane wide from the road is better for the scenic overlay district.
Well, let me ask you a question. If you are, there's clearly a problem if there are more than two cars there. But if you have two cars there, is, is that manageable, just with two cars?
If you have two cars there, you're backing down the driveway.
You're still backing down.
If you're going out of the garage, you're backing down the driveway.
But please, don't go on the number of cars. It's a single-family car. You have two parking spaces in the garage, two parking spaces on the driveway. So I, I think if you stop pushing the number of cars, parking spaces needed for the cars, you're going right into his bucket. And I, I think the issue here, as far as I see it, is safety.
Space to turn a car around.
To me, it's a major issue.
Yes. But not, you know, if we are proving this because the applicant needs two additional parking spaces and the fact that he probably can park six cars there right now, that you're gonna lose me on that one.
Yeah.
We're trying to take in the two spaces, shoving them eleven feet over, so you can actually get out of the garage and turn around if cars are parked.
Well, I think that's where the, it's a safety issue. And that's, and, and that, I think, is what's driving the sentiments in favor of your application, is that there is now, now there could be a lot of properties that have the same problem. And if they were to get before the board and make a, make a viable safety argument, we would probably be very sympathetic, notwithstanding the scenic overlay. I mean, we get a lot of applications involving the scenic overlay district where we don't even know why they're here.
Because they have to.
So, because, right, because the code requires it. But, right, but I, but I think it's not sacrosanct. It's, it is assessed on an individualized basis. And I mean, these, you're, you know, you're gonna have to make the argument to the ZBA that's not just for, that there are safety reasons that are really seriously implicated here. Because Don, you know, raises the issue that they will raise, which is, if all you want is to increase the number of parking spaces, well, that's everyone's problem. And they, and they shouldn't relax the code, the zoning code for that. But if there's, if you can make a safety-related argument, then I, I think that would be much more compelling. I haven't actually, myself, gone to that area. I think other colleagues have. You know, I credit their opinions. If it's low, if the property is located in an area where there, there could be a distancing problem, a site distance problem, well, that, that's an individualized, you know, concern for that particular property. But it's gonna go to the ZBA anyway. So I think procedurally, what we're gonna do is we're gonna refer the matter to the ZBA for next month. And we're also gonna schedule a public hearing. Now, when does the ZBA actually meet?
It's the first Tuesday of the month.
Okay, so theoretically, theoretically, we would get a determination from the ZBA in advance of our public hearing so that we could move forward without delaying the application, so.
That's cool. So we have a referral resolution and a public hearing.
Okay, so I guess we should do the referral resolution first?
Sure, sure thing.
Okay.
Do a quick little summary. Whereas an application was submitted for site plan approval for the extension of a driveway to create two conforming parking spaces located at thirty-two Lincoln Avenue in the scenic roads overlay district and the R-12 zoning district. And whereas pursuant to the building inspector's notice of disapproval dated November 28th, 2022, the following variances are required for the proposed plans. A ten-foot scenic roads overlay district vegetative buffer setback variance, where the minimum required scenic roads overlay district vegetative buffer setback is thirty-five feet pursuant to Village Code. And whereas the applicant wishes to apply to the Rybrook Zoning Board of Appeals for the above variants, rather than modify the project to conform to the above referenced sections of the Village Code. And whereas the Planning Board reviewed and considered the application at its January 12th, 2023 meeting, and whereas the proposed action is a type-two action under Seeker, now therefore be it resolved that for the reasons stated herein, the Village of Rybrook Planning Board hereby refers the application listed in here, listed herein, to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Any, any modifications, concerns, additions to that resolution? If not, can I have a motion?
Can we, could we end without, without endorsing it? Like, we're referring it without endorsing it?
I was going to actually take that out, and I, I, last time we referred something to the ZBA. This was my, my error. The Planning Board had expressed kind of in favor of the variants. And the zoning board, they have to evaluate it on their five criteria. So I think the best strategy going forward is unless there are blatant planning concerns that you'd like to express in the resolution, we should not state whether or not the Planning Board favors or disfavors the variant. So no comments.
Right, I'm saying without, without.
Yep, no endorsements.
Without endorsing.
Yep.
We're just, we're just gonna refer. We're just gonna refer. Okay. So that, so the, so the language is, is, as, as you indicated?
As I indicated, yeah, I had left a blank for any planning issues, but I took that blank out from the draft. So straightforward, just like I read.
Right. Okay, can I have a motion in a second to adopt?
So move.
Mr. Grzan.
Yes.
Mr. Crumb.
Yes.
Mr. Mendelson.
Yes.
Mr. Retner.
Yes.
Mr. Richmond.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Chairman Goodman.
Yes.
Thank you.
And now we have a motion, a resolution to schedule the public hearing for next month. So Sarah, why don't you?
Whereas an application for site plan approval has been submitted for the expansion of a driveway at the property located at thirty-two Lincoln Avenue in the Village of Rybrook. Now therefore be it resolved, the Planning Board of the Village of Rybrook will hold a public hearing on February 9th, 2023, at 6:30 PM in Village Hall or in a virtual format, as may be determined, determined depending on public health concerns. Be it further resolved that the applicant is hereby directed to comply with Section 250-40 of the Village Code regarding notification of the public hearing.
Okay, unless there are any modifications, let's move and, okay.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Grzan.
Yes.
Mr. Crumb.
Yes.
Mr. Mendelson.
Yes.
Mr. Retner.
Yes.
Mr. Richmond.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Chairman Goodman.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
May I ask, Drew, I'd like to follow up on a question on this notification. I know there is a two weeks. Is it that the neighbors have to receive the letter like two weeks in advance? I was reading some material for tonight's meeting, and one of the neighbors sent us an email where she was pointing out that she did not receive the notification of the meeting, public hearing, until about the day earlier, day, one day before the meeting.
For what? There's no public hearings on the agenda for tonight, so there's no.
I'm just asking general. I'm not asking.
Generally, there's a, you have to send them ten days, you have to send them ten days before the meeting.
They have to be postmarked, then.
Yes.
They have to be postmarked 10 days.
Yes, postmarked 10 days. So if she got it one day before, that's just the mail. But it's, you know, there are.
It was a postmark. Yeah, the lady went through the whole process explaining where the letter was mailed out of state and stuff like that, yeah. And it just dawned on me, I said, you know, when we schedule these, so it is a 10 days.
Postmarked 10 days, and there's no requirement that you mail it from, no requirement that you mail it from in-state. I mean, but that's why we have the newspaper, that's why we have the sign on the property, so there's other things we try and do to account for those errors, but sometimes it just happens like that.
I'm sure you've seen that email.
Yeah, I do, I know what you're talking about.
Good night.
Good night, you guys.
Thank you.
Take care, bye-bye.
Okay, our next item is 44 Rock Ridge Drive.
All right, good evening, members on the board. My name is Greg Ketchepoli. I was the design engineer on the project at 44 Rock Ridge Drive. Currently, the site as-is, we have access via blacktop driveway in this area. There are no patios in the rear. How do I clear this?
On the left?
Oh, there we go.
Can't see that at all.
Excuse me? Here, let me zoom in a little bit.
Is there any way of swinging that a little bit further? No?
That's better, much better, thank you. Can you see it, Chuck?
Yeah.
Okay. So, existing conditions on the lot, there is an existing deck in the rear, composite deck with steps. There's a front porch, a driveway, and then a walkway access to the front door. Existing conditions are shown on the left-hand side in this area. And then proposed, we're looking to add two driveway aprons, one eight foot wide at the entrance to the driveway, and then another apron three foot wide at the entrance to the garage. And.
What do you mean by driveway apron, walkway? What's an apron to a driveway?
It's, it's a.
Like a walkway along it?
Instead of asphalt, it's like pavers or some type of cobblestone, Belgium block, right? In this case, we're proposing pavers as the, as the apron. In addition, we wanted to add two walkways to access the rear of the property. We have a proposed paver walkway on, over here on the right side of the home. And then we have a proposed pea gravel bed surrounding a bluestone pathway on the left side of the home. Sorry, the marking isn't really working too well. There's a proposed paver walkway on the left side of the home, and a proposed patio of 398 square feet with associated stormwater management and landscaping, which I'm going to get to now.
How about our official? Excuse me? How about our official card? No?
I'm gonna show that on the landscape plan. So. On the right side of the home, separating the front of the home from the rear, there'll be a white PVC fence with black posts. That'll be separating the front from the rear on the right side, and. The rear deck, we're gonna be adding steps down to the proposed patio, which are going to be trex or composite decking with a pebblestone gray finish to match, to match the existing. Then we're gonna have the bluestone paver walkway on the left side of the home surrounded by pea gravel bed, which will resemble this picture here. This is the pavers that I was talking about for the, for the aprons, as well as the paver walkway on the right side of the home. They're gonna go with an Onyx Natural Cambridge Pavers. The patio will be done with Thermo Bluestone as the finish. Here's another picture of the rear patio stone. And then there will be some permeable synthetic turf proposed as part of this project, which will go in the rear of the property in this corner here as a play area. We are.
Secrecipiole. The reason that you use in the pavers and the turf, is it to get around the percentage of the impervious surface to be within the code regulation?
No, actually.
Or is it just for the aesthetics of?
It's for the aesthetics only.
If we were considering pavers to be impervious, would you still be within the percentage of, within the code requirements, how much of the impervious surface in front you can have?
Right, so if the pavers were considered pervious, then we would meet the requirement. But I did not consider the pavers as being pervious, I consider them as impervious for purposes of the application. And since we are within 100 feet of the water course in the rear, that's what triggered us to have to come present to the planning board.
And the existing asphalt driveway would remain asphalt?
That's correct. The, the driveway would remain asphalt with the exception of the aprons.
Aprons, but you can drive on the pavers?
Correct, yes.
It's not gonna look very, you know, it's gonna look kinda.
There are a number of homes that have, it's like a picture frame.
Yeah? Okay.
Right.
So how much in the way of additional impervious surface are we talking about?
So, the total additional impervious surface is. So here I did a schematic of existing, here I did a schematic of existing impervious areas versus proposed. And existing, we have 3,561 square feet of impervious area. And proposed, we have 4,329, so there's an additional 768 square feet of impervious being proposed as part of the application. And we did receive comments from Mr. Nowak and Hanover. And we didn't get a chance to address them yet, but we are gonna take those into consideration, revisit the plan, and try and reduce some of this disturbance that we have in the rear due to stormwater management. So since we are required to capture all impervious surfaces on the lot, we have to install stormwater. And the front of the property is higher than the rear. So some, some areas of the, of the home can be captured by bringing the water to the front, but some will have to get captured in the rear. And I'm gonna do my best to balance that out to decrease the amount of disturbance in the rear, which was one of the concerns that I saw based off the comments.
Yeah, now, Sarah, there's, this is a wetland area. Where's the wetland buffer?
The wetland buffer goes through, the house is mostly contained within it, I think.
Right.
It's, yeah, it's like right along the front door. There's a small portion of the front of the house that's not in it. Yeah, there it is, right? That line that goes through the footprint of the house.
Right, right. So when it comes to stormwater, I mean, what do you, what do you do? The whole thing, the whole backyard, is, am I correct that the whole backyard is in the wetland buffer?
Yes, but the board needs to understand why this property is in the wetland buffer. All the way to the far back, there's a retaining wall, right, Greg?
Correct.
And that wall's what, like, eight feet high or six feet high? It's a stone rubble wall.
Correct.
There's a, there's a brook that comes down from Meadowlark and King Street and comes down, and it's basically a drainage channel. So that's why this house is essentially in a wetland buffer.
So it's a man-made, it's a man-made?
Man-made, natural, added on to over the years, it's there. It's a brook, it flows even on a blue sky day, it's got water in it. But this property is actually eight feet higher than the level of the brook. But in, in technicality, because the brook is there, there's a 100-foot wetland buffer. But this property is actually eight feet higher than, roughly, I'm, I'm just saying eight feet.
So what in, so what in general, when it comes to stormwater, would you recommend? It sounds like you could, you know, if you're actually above what the, the, the buffer is, it's sort of, it's sort of a faux buffer.
Correct.
So the house is really higher than whatever the wetland would be. So how, where, how would you drain, you know, the water that, that attaches to that part of the house?
Well, and that's what we were talking about on the phone the other day. There are certain things that we're gonna look for, especially the driveway is gonna go into the wetland buffer area because driveway comes down. Okay, so we're gonna look for pretreatment of the water. Okay, that way we need a water that goes into the stormwater system. At least your oils and your grit gets captured out. So things like that are gonna be done. Portion of the house could go towards the front. Rest of the house is just gonna have to go in the back. There's just no way, okay? But we're gonna try to balance that out equally and try to do our best to get as much out of the buffer as we possibly can to try not to disturb the buffer as much as possible.
All right, and as far as mitigation, Sarah, what, based on the, I guess, well, there's 700 feet of additional impervious surface, but how much of that, how much of that is relevant to the mitigation ratio for the wetland? Because not all the, is that, with that 700, because some of it is actually in front of the house, which wouldn't be, which wouldn't impact the wetland. So how much of the buffer, if there's theoretically, is being affected?
Yeah, and, and that was the number that we had asked for, a verification of how much actual disturbance is in the wetland buffer. That number wasn't on the plan, so once that has been indicated, but like you said, I would assume it's slightly under 700, so we're looking at probably 1,200 square feet of mitigation that's required. But we'll verify that when we get that calculation.
Assuming it is, is there a place to put that mitigate, those mitigations?
That's one of the challenges.
I apologize, it's one-to-one now, it's no longer two-to-one.
Correct.
In the buffer.
Yeah, we just changed that.
We just changed it.
How did that happen?
And it slipped my mind.
It should've come to us, right?
No, it did.
It did, you.
It came from you guys. You guys changed it.
We changed it?
I think it's in the word, we smart.
The, the way that it was. It, it actually didn't make sense because actual wetland disturbance had to be mitigated at one-to-one, but buffer disturbance, which is outside of the wetland, we were requiring two-to-one.
Makes a lot of sense, doesn't it?
We wanted to make it consistent.
I was caught by surprise for a minute.
So we'll probably need roughly 600 square feet, which I believe they will be able to meet, and I'll also add that they have a very robust mitigation planting plan with wetland species that is very appropriate.
Any, any questions for the applicant?
I have a question about, I'll direct it to you. Whose issue is it with regard to what type of material is used for the apron at the end of the driveway?
Architecture, re-beep.
Is that the ARV that decides that? Okay.
There's, there's no variance triggered by that. That pathway on the right is very close to the boundary line there, there's no variance issue, right?
Put flat patios like that, or flat walkways right up against the property line.
Right, and as far as screening goes, the entire perimeter of the property is currently planted with Arbor VIT II, so screening isn't an issue as, as is, and we're only enhancing that with the proposed plantings.
Okay. If there are no other questions for the applicant or for our, our staff here, why don't we schedule, we have a public hearing to schedule for this matter for next month, so. Sarah, you have the con.
Whereas, applications for approval of a site plan and wetlands permit for the construction of a patio, bluestone walkway, paver walkway, driveway apron, stormwater system, and landscaping has been submitted for the property at 44 Rock Ridge Drive. Now therefore be resolved, the planning board of the Village of Rybrook will hold a public hearing on February 9th, 2023 at 6:30 in Village Hall, or in a virtual format as may be deemed depending on public health concerns to consider the above referenced application. Be it further resolved that the applicant is hereby directed to comply with section 250-40 of the village code regarding notification of the public hearing.
Can I have a motion a second to adopt the resolution?
Second.
Mr. Grzan?
Yes.
Mr. Crum?
Yes.
Mr. Mendelson?
Yes.
Mr. Retner?
Yes.
Mr. Richman?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Chairman Goodman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great night, everyone.
Nice job presenting.
Okay, and last matter.
Actually, before we get to the last matter, I just wanted to bring something to everyone's attention. I tried, last time we did a training session, we talked about adding language to the resolutions that would become standard to enforcement.
Yeah.
And so I tried it out for Bobby Lane, and I just figured, well, it's a short agenda, maybe I could just read you the, the two clauses I added, and we can see.
I read it, I thought it was beautiful. Finally, I said, there, there's a little bite.
Okay, will read it anyone?
I read it this afternoon when I was going through the material, yeah. I was away for a long time, so come on.
It's, I added two resolve clauses at the very end of the resolution that I'm hoping to make standard. They read, be it further resolved, all construction shall be in performance, shall be performed in accordance with all approved plans, and land use approvals, any approved amendments thereto, and field changes authorized and approved by the building inspector, the superintendent of public work/village engineer, or their designee. Any applicant who violates this resolution may be issued a stop-work order and summons in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 91 of the Code of the Village of Rybrook. Be it further resolved that this resolution sells to precede conflicting provisions of the village code.
Oh, okay.
Should it be as authorized by the building inspector, superintendent, et cetera, in writing? So that someone doesn't say, hey, I talked to Mike and he said it was fine?
Yeah, that's, I have no objection to that. That's fine.
I, I like that provision too, more than the other one, because some of these field changes now become a matter of record and they are approved, so we are not surprised. All right?
Right.
I also, I read this part. I also said during construction, the. "I also said, during construction, the village, village building inspector or superintendent of public work/village engineer may authorize upon written request of the applicant minor changes to the approved site plan. Such minor modifications shall be consistent with their design and intent of the approved site plan. The architect or engineer of record shall submit the approved changes on a set of as-built plans, which plans shall be maintained in the permanent file of the building department. All changes to the site plan other than minor changes described herein shall require approval of a site plan amendment by the planning board."
That's the one I really liked. Yes, I think that's, that's a really good one.
That's fine. I, I actually have a, a question, Drew, about the very last resolution, which is that this resolution shall supersede conflicting provisions of the Village Code. Do we know whether it does? And if it does, do we have the authority to override the code?
Yeah, so you can do, like if you were to condition, this resolution does not. But let's say you put a condition in. That's maybe, maybe that condition is technically, you could do, whatever the condition is, you could do it. The code allows you to do it. But as condition of this site plan, you are prohibited from doing it.
Okay.
Then that, in that case, this resolution would govern.
Like a pump location.
Like a pump location, right. If the pump location complies with the setback, you can put it in, you know, you could put it wherever it would comply with the setback. But if this board says it's going to go in this location and it's going to be screened with very specific things, well then that, this resolution is more detailed than the code. So it's not technically a conflict, but it, it would govern.
Okay, I just wanna make sure of that. But yeah, I, I, I think you've done a really good job in drafting these things.
You know, this is when the engineer tries to be a lawyer. Code is approved by the board, village board. And here, if I read this correctly, we can almost make a modification without the village board's approval, like we are approving side amendments to the code.
Well, you can, you cannot use your power, your approval power to modify the code. What you can do is issue conditions that are relevant to the application at hand.
Well, if the code says 10 feet and we say, no, it has to be six, well, we are going to...
But you're going, the six feet would be justified through your conversation and evidence in the record. You, you know, that's why you're going to do it. We, your legal counsel wouldn't let you arbitrarily put in a random condition, you know, or go forward with something that's out of the scope of your jurisdiction. So you can't go and start, you know, using this resolution to modify...
You can count on Drew not to let us go.
Okay, thank you.
You know, I added that, that last resolved clause about the conflict because I know we had talked about the power of this resolution and to make people aware that they need to be reading their resolutions. They need to keep this close at hand because it's going to have, in some cases, specific conditions.
And actually, you know, this, this gives, you know, me an opportunity of, you know, in our discussion about the resolution highlighting these two clauses and, you know, emphasizing them for the benefit of applicants that, you know, we're washing them, basically, that, you know, these...
And this resolution would have been very helpful, this language in an application that we had a few months back.
That's what, this is that. Right, right.
Well, it made things more better.
This is definitely, I like this.
More better.
Yes.
Or best. Anyway, that's good, okay.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, that was very good.
Yeah, that's great. Okay, we have, while we're at it, Drew, why don't you explain this local law? It sort of makes sense to me, but explain it anyway.
Yeah, so the village, how much time do we have?
Your summary is very, it's much easier to read than the law itself.
Yeah, true.
It is a technical law. And that, the reason for that is because, you know, we want to make sure that the requirements currently, like oil tanks and fuel burning equipment, they're regulated in two locations. You have them regulated in Chapter 162, but then we specifically have generators, permanent stand, standby generators, regulated in the zoning code, which is the reason that this is before you, because we have to modify a provision of the zoning code. What this law does is it, it now regulates all oil and gas burning equipment just like we regulate the generators. Holy smokes.
Is that right?
That's right, yes. That's right.
Oh, wow, wow, okay.
Well, that stinks. Stay in here for a little while.
You can draw out your explanation now. Are we in the buffer or the wetland?
So what this, you'll, this language should look familiar because it does come up when we regulate generators. One thing that, that will change is we had added that the placement of permanent stand, standby generators placed in, placed for multifamily uses in residential districts will, will now require site plan, and they previously didn't. So this is kind of Mickey Izzo's brainchild, where he was reviewing these permits and realizing that people weren't being treated fairly, you know, for generators, but yet you weren't subject to the same standards for an oil tank in your yard, and it didn't make any sense. So this law kind of cleans up the code and makes sure that all this type of equipment is all being treated fairly and that the language in Chapter 162 mimics the language in Section 250-4.1. And I'm only modifying, for the zoning code, you're only, we're only modifying that one, adding that one word, that multifamily use. Everything else in that section remains the same.
I'm, I'm surprised that hasn't been a regulation. A multi, you know, multifamily applicants can put these generators wherever they want, basically?
Right, well, well, not wherever they want, right? There are still requirements in subsection B, but now they're going to require site plan, a little bit more regulation for those types of uses. That seemed to make sense.
And that sort of makes sense to me anyway, because we're dealing with a safety issue.
Yeah.
Doesn't change the requirement for single-family homes?
It does not change the requirement for single-family homes.
So your single-family, you can install without any site plan approval, correct?
Correct. You know, there are still standards, but...
Standards.
Yes.
And remind me, refresh my memory, Mike. With a single family on the size of a tank, for example, is there is a maximum tank that an applicant or, not applicant, homeowner can install?
No, our code doesn't govern the size of tank. I mean, if you want a 500-gallon tank or a 1,000-gallon tank, that's up to you. So if you want 25 hours of runtime, 48 hours of runtime...
Why should you not put a maximum? Let's say somebody wants to install a 10,000-gallon oil tank on a single property, on a single-family property, they can do that today?
No, because then you trigger Westchester County Health Department approvals and permitting for tanks over a certain size.
Westchester Department, they're, it was told us that's your local, local issue.
But Health Department regulates tanks over 1,100 gallons.
Okay, all right, okay, thank you.
And residential oil tanks are only allowed to be at 550 internally, but now it's, now there's 330-gallon tanks, so you're allowed to go up to two 330 tanks inside a house. So anything over that, you have to get Health Department approval.
The material for the tank, is it...
There's a few different materials out there. There's iron tanks made out of steel.
You can still install the metal tank.
Yes, you can. There are fiberglass tanks, there are hybrid tanks that are plastic and galvanized. There's a multitude of tanks. Portchester Library just installed a fiberglass tank, so a fuel tank. So, and there's a multitude of tanks.
Done. All right, so it's, we, is there a resolution associated with this?
Yes, there is. I have a draft report, report and recommendation in the agenda.
Okay, why don't you review it with us?
This is where I regret getting lengthy. Resolution, resolution authorizing submission of a report and recommendation to the Rybrook Board of Trustees and a local law to amend Chapter 162 and Chapter 250, Section 4.1 of the Code of the Village of Rybrook concerning construction and installation of oil-burning equipment, gas-burning equipment, oh, that's in twice, and fuel storage tanks. "Be it further resolved that the Rybrook Planning Board hereby submits the attached report and recommendation to the Rybrook Board of Trustees and the proposed local law, amending Chapter 162 and Chapter 250, Section 4.1 of the Code of the Village of Rybrook concerning construction and installation of oil-burning equipment, gas-burning equipment, and fuel storage tanks. And be it further resolved that the Planning Board Chairman is hereby authorized to finalize the attached report and recommendation in consultation with the village council to accurately reflect the Planning Board's discussion at its January 12, 2023 meeting, prior to such report and recommendation being forwarded to the Board of Trustees and village administrator."
Okay, so resolution, how about the report and recommendation? See how I missed that? We, we have a report and recommendation, right?
Yes.
Yes, we do, so... So that's the first resolution. Then I go into the actual report and recommendation where I write, I wrote an overview of the law, which pretty much is consistent with the summary I just provided. So I can read it if you'd all like, but spare you.
You can just summarize it, give us the high points.
I, it was pretty much what I, what I had just, yeah. Just a little bit more detail about the specifics. And then we get to the discussion. "The Planning Board discussed the provisions of the local law at its January 12, 2023 meeting, during which the village council provided input. The Planning Board provided the following comments on the proposed local law." It seems like the comments that we're receiving is pretty much just a general, in favor of the legislation?
Yeah, we concur with the, with the law as proposed. Yeah, makes sense. Just out of curiosity, between the single-family homes and the multifamily homes, what's the difference between the two that they're treated differently under the, under our code? Or are they?
Say that, single-family and two-family?
Yeah, I mean, why wouldn't single-family be, be included among the regulated actors here?
Well, so, single-family and two-family homes are, there's still regulations, but it does not amount to site plan requirements. Now, the idea is that there's more happening for multifamily buildings, more parking to account for, more windows to be concerned about, landscaping. So when you're installing a standby generator, there's, there's more elements that should be looked at and evaluated to make sure it's going in the right place to have the, a minimal impact.
It makes sense. Makes sense, okay. All right, can I have a motion in a second to adopt the resolution as presented by council?
Moved.
Second.
Mr. Grzan?
Yes.
Mr. Crum?
Yes.
Mr. Mendelson?
Yes.
Mr. Retner?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yep.
Chairman Goodman?
Yes. And then we need, and then the resolution directing our report and recommendation to the Board of Trustees.
Moved.
Okay.
Second.
Mr. Grzan?
Yes.
Mr. Crum?
Yes.
Mr. Mendelson?
Yes.
Mr. Retner?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Chairman Goodman?
Yes.
Good night and good luck.
My goodness, one hour.
A record, folks, a record.
You're gonna hit the football game.
We can thank Bobby Lane.
No, basketball.
Game is over, there are no more football games.
Basketball, Michigan's playing tonight.
They already played the Super Bowl?
Motion second, close the meeting?
Yeah, say it.
Yeah, that would be nice.
Motion second, close the meeting?
Yeah.
Pushing.
Second?
Second.
Long favor?
Aye.